Okay. Good evening, I will call tonight's Board of Education meeting to order at 6:30. The Secretary will call the role of each Board member to determine if a quorum is present.
Mr. Kofelt.
Here.
Mr. Gardner.
Here.
Mr. Heron.
Here.
Mr. Kimpton.
Here.
Mr. Sees.
Here.
Ms. Nichols.
Here.
And Ms. Schrader is here.
Thank you. If you will all rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And, under recognitions and presentations, anyone from the audience who would like to address the Board may do so when that agenda item is being discussed. Before you approach the podium, if you will sign in at the media table, you will be given up to three minutes and one appearance at the podium to speak on the agenda item. Next is Sedalia School District Foundation, Deidra.
Hey, you know, school starts next month. Can you guys believe that? Anyway, so we haven't had a breakfast in a couple of years, and I've heard that we're going to get to do that this year for our Sedalia 200 staff. So, on Breakfast Day, we decided to make a little special. We've got some special treats planned that are kind of out of the normal thing that we do, so we're looking forward to giving some of our staff, or just all of our staff, some extra special treatment as they go into the school year. Also, Teri's not got the final numbers in, but she allowed me to report that we're just a little over $22,000 for the golf tournament this year, and it's in the top five, so we're pretty proud of that. We've got some money to do some things and looking forward to another great school year. And then, it'll be ready to start planning homecoming, so get ready, and come meet us for breakfast, please. Come up for breakfast, and we'd love to see you, and we'll send you out some notes before it gets here, so, thanks.
Sedalia Community Educators Association, and I will now ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda items, which will be 1 through 6 in the packet, do I hear a motion to accept, or 4.1 to 4.6, I'm sorry. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda items?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And, 4.9, this is a personnel recommendation that Mr. Stees will abstain from.
Do I have a motion to accept consent agenda item 4.7?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda items, which will be 1 through 6 in the packet, do I hear a motion to accept, or 4.1 to 4.6, I'm sorry. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda items?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And I'm opposed.
You're opposed?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Payment of bills, Mr. Kofelt will abstain from this one. Do I hear a motion to accept consent agenda item 4.7?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I've got a question. On consent items for personnel, I'll have to abstain.
Right, we're gonna do that at the very end.
Okay.
We've got it coming up. It was added today as 4.9.
Yeah, you said 1 through 6, so that's what.
Yeah.
Okay.
Payment of bills, Mr. Kimpton will abstain from consent agenda item 4.8. Do I have a motion to accept consent agenda item 4.8?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And, 4.9, this is a personnel recommendation that Mr. Stees will abstain from. Do I have a motion to accept consent agenda item 4.9, personnel recommendation for Christie Watson?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 I abstain.
And Mr. Stees abstains. Any opposed? Thank you. Decision, unfinished business is the next on our agenda regarding the Loftus Early Childhood Center for Para-positions, is Mr. Sherman?
No, I believe he's out of town on vacation.
Okay.
This week. That is coming back for decision, it was discussion last month. He's needing to add four more paraprofessionals to the program at the Early Childhood Center. Should be fully funded by ECSE.
Anybody have any questions regarding that? Not, I'll take a motion to approve the four para-positions for the Loftus.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is the robotics addition, Dr. Fraley, I think you have that.
Yes, Mr. Wright's in attendance this evening, needing a decision to move forward. As we've talked about this for a few months now, and it's coming kind of crunch time, you know, what direction are we going to go, or if we're gonna go a direction. So, the Board had approved Mr. Wright to go out and do some fundraising, which he has done, and he's going to give us an update on where that stands, and kind of seek a recommendation as to whether we go with a freestanding building or metal structure adjacent to the current Smith Cotton, or to do the full-blown addition to the brick-and-mortar of Smith Cotton High School. So, Mr. Wright, if you could update them on your progress on fundraising.
Thank you, good evening. We are still actively pursuing our fundraising efforts. We are sitting at around $200,000 right now, committed towards our $500,000 goal. One of the things that we're coming up against is the discussion of which building option are we looking at, and through talking to multiple potential donors and sponsors, they are all leaning towards the metal building, due to the cost of that and the meeting our needs and the, you know, the timeframe on that, but also, they see that that's better use of their money to go towards a cheaper project that suits our needs, instead of going with the, you know, the million-dollar-plus building addition. So, we are asking for approval to allow us to build the metal building, it's freestanding, which will allow us to, like I said, meet our needs, have our height requirements and the space that we'd like, and expand our current engineering facility. And, with, if we have approval on that, we feel like we'll be able to finalize all of our fundraising efforts, just to have a, you know, a building that they know that we're moving towards.
So, and, is it also correct, you made mention that you have some donors, of course, that want to see a freestanding structure and not the attachment to the current Smith Cotton, and that they may, if that was to be the case, that the district went the more expensive route, they felt that wasn't in the best interest of the taxpayers, and they would withhold their contribution?
Correct, yeah.
So, the freestanding building, I believe, if I'm looking at the plans, that was option 1?
Yes.
Am I correct?
Option 1.
Okay, option 1. So, does anyone have any further questions for Mr. Wright?
Last time I asked if we could have our security director do an evaluation of the freestanding building, to make sure that we have everything covered as far as security and access and control. So, has that been done yet? Have we involved Mr. Fraley?
That has not been completed at this point in time, no. Certainly do that before we finalize any type of plans, we go into that. Just need to know which direction to go, so we know where to focus those needs and attention to.
And then, you're good with access to utilities and servicing, like the air handlers, if we need to? We've got plenty of room to get in there, and...
According, you know, I have to go off what Mr. Paul has advised us in the past, and that aside from we would have to move, potentially move a gas line, well, with this new location, I'm not sure if the gas line would even have to be relocated. At most, the one gas line runs adjacent to the sidewalk that is nearest to the building on the southwest side of that building, and it would probably be best if we went ahead and moved that gas line anyway, over to the west side of that drive along the backside of Smith Cotton, and then came, come back into the meter on that west side near the
So, you know, Project Lead the Way in Robotics, and it's a fantastic program, and I don't want to slow down the progress and such, I'd prefer to see an attached building, but, you know, if you're confident on we have access to get into our utilities and air handlers that are in there, and it's gonna give us access or aggress out of the cafeteria area with no restrictions, and we get a safety evaluation from Mr. Klein, to make sure that we got all our points covered on a detached building with access, you know, I don't have a problem with going with the metal building.
I think, you know, in an ideal world, an ideal financial situation, to extend the existing structure, again, would be maybe the best thing to do, but with, we're not bleeding extra money, you know, to throw towards that at the moment. And I have said before, previously, that I could not recommend spending a significant portion of district funds to do that unless, until we have our long-range strategic plan for all our other facilities that need some great attention, including our build, three of our buildings that are now 100 years old or approaching. So, and that in light of some of our donors not really wanting to go that direction either, I think this is the fastest, best, most affordable route to meet the ends that we need with that program.
Any other questions, concerns?
Maybe this is for both of you, but will the donors be upset if, in later construction on this building, that we build, we build on a space, and then, and then basically take down the metal building?
I don't know how to answer that. I'm not sure where they would be on that right now. I mean, obviously, they're looking at it for a long-term facility that they're, you know, gonna see up and have signage inside, but I'm not sure how they would feel about that in the future.
And Mr. Wright still would need to meet his fundraising goal to cover the cost of the building as well, so...
Okay. I just, at some point, if it's determined that we can build the same, the same space into, into a part of this building, are you gonna, are your donors, and that's not gonna happen for a good long time, I don't think.
Right.
But would they be upset with the metal building going away?
That's a good question. I'd have to check with them and ask them.
If you could have those discussions when you're doing that, and that would become part of any memorandum of understanding that we contractually enter with those individuals.
Yeah, and again, that, if we have a goal that we're going towards, we know that we're doing the metal building, that makes all those discussions a lot more easy for us to negotiate.
Okay. Any others questions? Then I will ask for a motion to approve the robotics addition, option number one, the metal building, as presented.
So moved. Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And, moving on to decision items, the tax rate hearing, I think that's you, Dr. Fraley?
Yes, the Board needs to approve, as we do each year, a special tax rate hearing meeting that would be scheduled prior to our regularly scheduled Board meeting on August 22nd at 6:15 PM to approve next year's levy. Our data has been submitted to the Auditor's Office, we're waiting to finalization of what that levy will be approved at.
Okay. Do I have a motion, or do anybody have any questions? If not, I'll take a motion to set the tax rate hearing as presented for Monday, August 22nd, at 6:15 PM, prior to our regularly scheduled Board meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Was that you, Scott?
I second it.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Tuition for the 2022-23 school year, Dr. Fraley?
Yeah, each year, the Board needs to set a tuition calculation, in particular, for sending school districts that have to pay tuition to our district, or potentially any individual parents who are wanting to send their students from out of district if we accept those students. That is plugged in. DESI has a quite in-depth calculation tool that is used to determine, this school year, the cost per pupil of expenditure for that is $9,744.90. That's based on the grade span level of 9 through 12. That is our largest, well, it has to do with Dresden and who, which kids they send over, and that, of course, is 9 through 12. The younger grades calculate a little higher than that, but I don't see any reason why we would calculate differently for different people. Potentially, you could have a parent, if you did that, paying, if they had three different kids in three different buildings, potentially paying three different tuition rates, and that makes no common sense to me. So, I would like for us to approve the amount as calculated for 22-23.
Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Fraley?
In the past, we would have kind of a range of options that we would choose.
Can you talk into the microphone, Scott? Please, thank you.
Okay. In the past, we would have a range of options that we would go through, and there was a little bit of flexibility. I take it that DESI has basically gotten rid of that flexibility?
There is no more flexibility in that. It is a calculation that's pulled from numbers from the ASBR, and based on tuition calculation cost for basically instructional support. It includes a lot of different things, it pulls out some certain federal money, it's quite complex, but it is by statute what we have to do now.
Okay, so, that might explain part of the jump and everything, so, because there's almost, almost $900 jump in this thing.
That's correct, and you know, sometimes that partly is due because all your teacher salaries and benefits go in, into that calculation, and that's largely reflected in that.
Okay. As long as, as long as we've done our homework, and since there's no flexibility, apparently, I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Anybody have any other questions? Go ahead. Make the motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Tiger legacy contract for Blake Olsteen?
Yes, this student was selected and approved by the committee for this scholarship. I just did not get his app, or his contract back until just this month, so that's why it comes to us this month. Just to ask for the Board to approve his contract as one of our scholarship award winners.
Okay. Any questions? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the Tiger legacy contract for Blake Olsteen.
So moved. Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Special education program evaluation, Mr. Pyle?
Yes, I'm happy to report on behalf of our special education team to our Board tonight, talk about our program. You've had an opportunity as a Board to look through this program evaluation at length in the packet, but I'd like to touch on a few things as well. So, our high points, our team across the district does a great job of giving our special education students an opportunity to be assessed, and that includes local assessments, state assessments, district-wide. We had a comparison in there for you, as we are doing that at 98.3% compared to the state at 95%. That's an effort by our teams where we want to include our students that are special needs, and as much opportunity in the regular education participation as that they can access. So, I thought that was a strength I wanted to share on behalf of the Board, and thank our teams for the work that they do. Another thing I wanted to point out was the proficiency rate for our children with IEPs in math, where we scored at the rate at 15.6% compared to the state at 15. So, just above there a little bit, but at the same time, it's worth celebrating for our kids. Another strength in our program is our secondary transition plans that at our high school complement our high school teams. We were approved at 100% by DESI on our transition plans for kids moving on through our programs, and then on to work and different things after school. So, also wanted to thank our parents and our team members for the comments that came through on that, with the DESI rating of 90%, 90% of our parents approve that our teams encourage their involvement in our process, so I think that's important to point out. We are continuing to grow in our special education population, as Mr. Sherman's talked with you recently, and you've approved tonight the positions where he's asked for. That is something for us to keep an eye on at our level, too. We've grown steadily. This year, the rate was at 14.2%. That's something for us to be aware of and focus on. One thing we do as a team locally is look at making sure we are qualifying the right students, and then making sure that we are providing the right services for those students, and that goes back to that opportunity that I pointed out, that getting these kids in regular ed as much as possible, it's important for them to, to give them a chance at a positive down the road, so. And one last thing, just, I guess just want to make sure that we thank the Board and thank the teams that are out there, from our, from our teachers, to our coordinators, to our paraprofessionals, that are all making this happen, so, just asking for approval of that evaluation tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Pyle? If not, can I have a motion to approve the special education assessment and evaluation program? Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Legal compliance plan certification statement, special ed?
Yes. Inside our packet, we looked at the local compliance plan certification statement for special education. This is something that comes around on a yearly basis. Our certification statement assures that our Sedalia School District 200 team will follow the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Model Compliance Plan for special education. This DESI plan guides our district as we implement all applicable state and federal regulations under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. In our past, we've always adopted the selection of A, which is the Adopt the Model Compliance Plan made by DESI, and then we, as a team, follow that plan, and that's what I would recommend that we continue to do, so...
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Pyle? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the special education local compliance plan certification statement as presented.
So moved.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And the professional development manual, Ms. Brownfield and Ms. Gilmore?
Tonight, we're seeking approval for the updated professional development manual. You'll see several changes in this... You'll see several changes in this manual.
Specifically, want to point out that we did do some research with inflation and things that have taken place. It looks like the, based on all of our research, the average per diem rate across the state is now at $59 for meals for a day. When you go into the larger cities, that's more. You need to see 64 is the rate for St. Louis area, so on and so forth. So we are presenting to you to increase that per diem rate to 59 as well as the mileage, following the IRS mileage rate at .625 a mile.
And that's an increase from $40 to $59 for the food reimbursement, and then 54 cents to 62 cents per mileage. Also, in this manual, you'll find the building updated goals listed in the, at the end of the manual. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
I got a question. Under, I appreciate the effort that went into the document and even increasing the mileage. I think that's important. When it comes to the belief statement, I was reading through here, and I got, I got to the first, first, first line on the belief statement, because it says, you know, that's what, it's the formal expression of the school district's fundamental values and what it aspires to be. And then right underneath that, it says, "We believe public education is the best assurance for the preservation and enrichment of our society." It just, it just caught me off guard, because, I mean, though I, I love the fact that we think so highly of public education, I think we all do, or we wouldn't be here, but it's just such a bold statement to say that it's the best assurance of preservation and enrichment of our society. I just, did you guys put that in there? Did somebody else?
No, this is our belief statement, and I, Dr. Fraley may have a little bit more history on how long that's been in place, but it has been in place on our website for years.
Right.
It's our SADIAE 200 belief statement that's embedded, and so when we look at the PDC manual, we typically, we want to definitely align to our belief statement, our mission statement, as well as then, you know, our data pieces, all of that that we take out of our collaboration, our survey information, et cetera, our CSIP goals.
The, the rest of the statement, I, I full-heartedly agree with, talking about, oh, working with parents and how it's a mutual piece, but I, I'm just not sure that I agree with that, that first sentence, so I'm just, quite honestly, I'd like to take the first sentence out and leave the rest, if it's all right with the rest of the board. I just think that it's, it's very just blanketed in the sense that is the best assurance. Well, I think if we took a consensus of our community, I'm not so sure that that's really what they would say, is that we believe that it's the best for preservation and enrichment of our society. I mean, it's definitely an integral part. Teachers are an integral part. Maybe we could change it to integral part, but I don't believe that it is, I just feel like it puts it as the, this is it, as opposed to an intricate part of a diverse society. So just thought I'd throw that out there.
And I guess for me, where it is the SADIAE 200's belief statement, that is what I want us to believe, that, that's, you know, our mission, you know, that's our goal, is that we're the choice, you know, of where students and community members want to send their children, where educators and staff, where community members want to be employed.
Sure.
That, to me, is...
No, and we agree. Maybe it's a matter of semantics, because I'm reading this as a matter of it, saying that it's a, this is the top piece, and...
So if we just took the word "public" out, we believe education is the best assurance for the preservation?
Yeah, I'd be good with that.
Is that what I'm hearing? I don't...
I, or, or an intricate part, something of that nature, I'd be, I'd be okay with.
I think as we move forward with our strategic planning process, that would be something that we could look at in the future. I think as far as this document's concerned, you know, we just work to align this document to our CSIP and our current belief statements, but that's something to consider.
I, I think that sentence, to reiterate what Ms. Nichols says, because we're a public education institution, we are saying that this is what we stand for as public education, and we have to believe in ourselves in order to, you know, accomplish our goals and to successfully accomplish our mission. And I, I understand where you're coming from also, Mr. Herron. The point is, I'm, I'm not, would never degrade that there are other educational opportunities that, that are very, very fine and good for other, you know, certain folks that choose that route, whether it be private, parochial, et cetera. So I, I think that word "public" is, is maybe where the hangup is, but being that we are a public education agency, then it's, I feel it's our duty to support ourselves.
Advocate for public education. That's, yeah. Any other comments or questions for Ms. Brownfield and Ms. Gilmore? Can I have a motion to approve the professional development manual for school year 2022-2023?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay.
Thank you.
Who seconded that? Was it?
Mr. Stees.
We're fine.
Mr. Stees, you did. Okay, thank you, sorry. Did you get that? Okay, the, Dr. Fraley, I think 6.7 is yours. Nepotism, conflict of interest?
Yes, this, this is something that we have to readopt policy 0342 every two years in open meeting as a political subdivision. It has to do with Missouri Ethics Commission, statute 105.485.4. It's one of those things that's pretty much not negotiable or up for, you know, something we have to do.
But does anybody have any questions for Dr. Fraley? If not, I'll ask for a motion to readopt policy 0342, nepotism, conflict of interest, financial disclosure as presented.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And MSBA audit, Dr. Fraley?
Yes, I give an update to the Board of Education. We had received feedback from MSBA. We, the board previously approved for the transition and auditing of our MCE policies over to Missouri School Boards Association policies. These are both legal entities that provide policy work for school districts in the state of Missouri to help school districts keep compliance with state and federal law. After doing our initial audit, we found that SADIAE 200 had about 121 customized policies and regulation, regulations over the years, and we had about 30 customized MCE policies, and 31 were entirely district-written. Now, I do not, as of yet, have those exact policies back from MSBA's report. They have offered to do a more in-depth cross-comparison of those, to look at those that were customized, look at those that were inherently just SADIAE 200-written, to do basically a legal analysis of those, because those, those policies span potentially many decades and are potentially out of compliance and may even be illegal for that matter. So I'm asking the Board of Education that we approve extending that audit. It will cost us $6,500 for this mini-project-based audit, but everything that we paid previously, which I believe was $4,165, would then be waived, so it is not an additional $6,500. It is just the difference between those two costs.
I'm moved.
Does anybody have any questions, comments, concerns? Scott has made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And under discussion, Dr. Fraley, the Hollis and Miller?
Yes, item, agenda items 7.1 and 7.2 really go together and are related. Our last vision team meeting via, on Thursday, last Thursday with Hollis and Miller, they finally presented some numerical data, data to the district about its facilities and potentially what kind of cost would be involved at each of our different buildings to do the major projects that one need to be done, and then kind of if we wanted to do a major overhaul of those buildings, in other words, a remodeling, complete remodeling, which would be new floors, flooring, walls, just if you, basically if you wanted to go into somebody's house and gut it and redo it and flip it. That's the best analogy I can come up with. So we have, and they have some numbers there. It's very expensive, I will say. If we added all that up in total that they presented, and I know their, their presentation is admittedly on the high side of things, trying to overestimate cost, so in the future planning stages, which this district needs to partake in, that we will have some numbers to know that if we do this, we do that, we're not going to actually undercut ourselves from a financial standpoint. The next step forward, I don't know if you want me to go to 7.2, because that's kind of what that bleeds into, is to have a special work session with the Board of Education, and I would like to include administration, building administration in that, potentially in parents', public input, to be invited to coordinate a time and day to have that session, potentially maybe possibly in Smithcotton Cafeteria or a library where we can sit out and divide up in small groups to look at Hollis and Miller's findings, to try to start prioritizing how and what we need to spend money on, which buildings we are going to give our attention, potentially which buildings we're not going to give our attention. We're still lacking some demographer information. The only piece that we have so far was an early analysis that, looking at a 10-year outlook, that SADIAE School District's student population could potentially drop by 7.8% by their calculation, which is contract, contrary to the actual population growth that Pettis County and SADIAE would see, but the demographer sees that growth in an older population and not student age. So, you know, that was kind of surprising. I don't know the exact source of that data yet. That was just anecdotal, what Hollis and Miller told us during the Zoom, and, you know, that, that presents a different scenario when we're looking at potential overcrowding going into the near future. And if they're, they are accurate, then almost 8% would be a significant amount. So all those things are going to come into play, but we need to begin having more strategic meetings, sitting down with actual data, getting people's input, getting principals' input from a building level, getting parent and even student input if they would like to participate. Their target dates were somewhere between September 12th and the 19th, mid-September, basically. They, they asked us, when, when would it be a good time? And I said, well, after we get past, of course, the holiday week, and then that following week, we kind of get settled in starting that second full week of September. So any time in that next two weeks is when we would try to make that accommodation. I want first to know if the board would be, you know, willing and able to try to schedule a special work session during that time.
I'm, I won't be available the week of September 12th, but Monday, September 19th is the, a date I'm going to throw out. I keep it on a Monday night. Is that Mondays best for you? Okay.
Any other input from board members or?
Diana, will you be gone that Saturday, the 17th, as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Anywhere in there, Paul?
And any, the, the whole week of September 19th, I would be open. I mean, I'm fine. I know we could, might be kind of hard to Zoom.
Well, this would not be a Zoom.
This would have to be live.
This is in-person. Oh, yes, yes, yes. We just, we just meet on Zoom out of convenience, so they don't have to drive down from the city.
Okay. So, yeah.
It's wide open, not a problem.
Okay. Any other comments? And I, I haven't looked at the school calendar yet to, for administrators and staff to...
I mean, I, I think it's great you're saying, hey, 19th, the week of the 19th's available. I'm open to a meeting if you could just find out, you know, do some extra digging on that week of the 19th. I'm open for it.
That week, okay.
And I, I think we need to get it out to our parents as soon as possible so they can participate.
And time-wise, is everybody thinking about six?
I, I would kind of plan on a couple-hour work session, be my guess.
So 6:00 PM? 6 to 8? Is that, okay?
Can we, can we potentially pick, I'll, I'll tell Hollis and Miller the 19th, 6 to 8, if some, for some unforeseen reason, there's some conflict. We might have to change that.
Yeah.
But hopefully that will work.
That's a start.
Yes.
So we got to get it started.
That, that is a process that needs to move forward. We are now approaching fall, and it is time to roll up our sleeves and get to work on that.
Okay. Okay, and you'll keep us posted if that date is a make, and then the community, we'd do, Bob would take care of all that.
Absolutely. We'll need to, to reach out and, and get some community input, and that, I'll lean heavily on our building admin crew for that direction.
Okay. All right. Information, AMI approval letter, Ms. Brownfield and Ms. Gilmore?
We just wanted to inform the board that we submitted our 2223 AMI Alternative Methods of Instruction letter, and we received a letter from the state of them approving, approving this.
Really, this is just a safeguard for us in the event that we would, we would run through our, our calendar and run into a problem. Maybe we have a year with significant weather this year outside of what we allowed for in the calendar, that this is a safeguard for us to be able to use it.
Any questions for either of them? Thank you. And SADIAE Park and Rec donation, Mr. Pyle?
Yes, our team would just like to share a thank you to the SADIAE Parks and Recreation for their recent donation. They donated 20 basketballs to be utilized in our district. It was just a nice, nice gesture for them to, to think of us working together, and just wanted to say thank you to them. They're thoughtful, miss.
Always nice. Thank you. Okay, we have completed the agenda, so I will ask for a motion to adjourn to closed executive session.
Make a motion to go to closed session pursuant to section 610-021, one legal actions, three hiring, firing, disciplining, disciplining or promoting, 13 personnel records, 14 records which are protected by law, 18 public safety, safety or law enforcement of the Missouri statutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Mr. Kofelt?
Here.
Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Kempton?
Aye.
Mr. Stees?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Ms. Schrader says aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you so much. Have a great week.